Manti County, I appreciate everybody being here this morning. I'd like to call it word of the Board of Captain's meeting for Tuesday, February 13th. This morning, we first start by thanking God and pledging allegiance to our great nation. Leading our dedication this morning will be Pastor Mike Harrison of the New Line Worship Center. And then after that, doing a pledge, will be Bob Bagdair, Lieutenant Colonel, U.S. Marine Corps and U.S. Army and in our Utilities Department. So if you please rise the vacation.
Sorry about that. If you please rise with the vacation and the pledge. Thank you.
Father, we are so thankful to be here this morning. Thank you for these great people that are here, Lord. You know every problem that everyone has. You know all the troubles and trials that all of us face. We thank you, Lord. We live in a free country, in a great county, with great people, Lord, looking out for each other. We ask you this morning, Father, that you would oversee this meeting. Cool, troubled minds, give peace where it's needed. We ask you, Lord, to let this be done for the glory of God, the good of the people. And, Lord, we praise you for all those that serve this country in the military and all those first responders, Lord. We thank you for that, Lord. We ask you now, Lord, to bless all that's done, keep everything done, Lord, without wrath, hateful speech, but, Lord, with tender mercies and grace toward each other. We give you praise, glory, and honor in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Colonel?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the Colonel and the Colonel's service to our great country. He currently serves our Utilities Department after twenty-two years of military service, both in the Marine Corps and in the Army. The Colonel had got a Bronze Star, Meritorious Service Medal, four times, Army Commendation, twice, Army Achievement, twice, a Marine Corps Good Conduct Medal, and that's the best one of all. Only enlisted guy can get that. National Defense Service Medal, twice, Sea Service Deployment Overseas Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Iraqi Campaign Medal, Combat Action Badge. That's, we got those two, right? And Air Assault Badge. And to let you know that the Colonel played a large part in the first Iraqi Free Elections and led to Army's support of the 2016 RNC Convention in Cleveland. Thank you, sir, for your service to our nation, and thank you for all the work you do for Manti County.
Mr. Chair, could I have a point of order?
Yes, sir.
I also want to bring up that, you know, occasionally this happens, and it's less and less these days, unfortunately, but District Three lost a World War II veteran over the weekend. Paul Force, who was 101 years old when he passed, served as a chaplain in the United States Navy, stationed all over the world, including in Pearl Harbor. And it's a great loss, and we lose these guys every now and again. There are fewer and fewer of them, and soon there won't be any more of them at all. And I just wanted to acknowledge the loss and have a brief moment of silence.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for recognizing that, another hero. Now, if we can move forward, County Administrator, any announcements?
No, sir. Only that the agenda update has been added to our online agenda, and also to remind you we have a time certain at 10:30.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Is there any request by Commissioners to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, thank you very much. We're going to move forward to our proclamations and awards. And first up, what we'd like to do is a presentation of Employee of the Month for Irvin White in our Code Enforcement and Public Service Division. So, Jody, you want to come on down? All right, guys, come on. Get the whole team behind you. Come on, don't be shy. I know you, Code Enforcement guys, are not shy.
Jody Fisk, Public Safety Director. Well, everyone's making their way down. I do want to take a minute and tell you a little bit about Irvin White today and what brings him in front of you. There was an incident at the beach where he noticed a woman in distress. He stopped to see what was going on. She had five children with her at the beach. If you've ever taken even one kid to the beach, that's something by itself, but five. Irvin managed to get her to the paramedics with the lifeguard, rounded up the five kids, figured out that the father of the children was just over an hour away from where his family was. The mother had to go to the hospital, was taken by ambulance, and Ernie stayed with the kids. He rounded them up, took them, provided them comfort, provided them care, provided them food and drinks, and kind of sad I missed that. Dad came just about two hours later, very, very grateful. And I think what makes this really special is that's not with, that's not part of his job. That was just something he did because he is an incredible person, a wonderful asset to Code Enforcement. We're very lucky to have him. And I know that those kids were grateful to have somebody to stay with them and keep them together as a unit, not make them have to go to a hospital, which can be scary for small children, especially when mom was sick. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Lieutenant Wooton and let him tell you a little bit more about, about our, Mr. White here.
Good morning. I've worked with Ernie for probably about six or seven years now, and he's always willing to step up and help. And he doesn't like awards. He doesn't like to be called out. He was really shocked when he was presented with this award at the Public Safety Center by Mr. Bishop. He had a couple of choice words for me afterwards, but he's very, a great guy. He does what we all do. Every officer that we have, every staff member we have, is always willing to help and go above and beyond. So just want to congratulate Ernie on a great job.
I just want to reiterate something that I said at our meeting the other day is that I want to share this with all of my staff. They are great guys and ladies. They do work very hard at everything they do. If you ask, they go. We don't whine, complain, and I, I think they're all Employees of the Month. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations, Ernie, Employee of the Month.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, Ernie, I had the pleasure of being there the other day and giving you this award, and just thank you for what you do. I mean, saving that woman's life, taking care of those kids. I'm sure it was like herding cats while all those kids running around. And, but we appreciate you and everything that you do in your service to Manti County. We appreciate all of Code Enforcement. You guys go out there every day, and it's a tough job, and sometimes it's unrecognized, but we will let you guys know we appreciate each and every one of you and the job you do every day, keeping the county safe. So thank you very much. Appreciate you guys. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, now go back to Public Safety.
Well, while we're here, I'd like to introduce our new Deputy Director, Logan Gregory. He's here to, he will be leading these guys now. And he comes to us with 30 years with NOAA, and so I'd like to invite him to step up and introduce himself and have to hand off a great team to him, but I'm very excited, and I think that it's a great addition to the Public Safety Team.
Good morning. Obviously, I'm a very lucky individual. I have a great team, two, three great teams, maybe even four, actually. And I just want to offer my hellos and that I'm really proud to be here. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them anytime. I was with NOAA for 30 years, like Jody said. I started in enforcement, was a uniform patrol officer for about two years, then was a Special Agent for about 16 years, supervisor, became a Special Agent in charge, and Deputy Director, then came back down to Florida where I'm from, and here I am. Love being here. So thank you for having me.
Welcome aboard. You've taken over a big crew, so good luck. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let everybody get out of here. All right, moving along. Next up is presentations, and we have a really cool one that we very rarely get to do, and I just think this is awesome. And do we need to, need to read a resolution into the record? County Attorney?
No.
Okay.
You just need to state what the item is.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is that, this is the adoption of a resolution of R-24038, designating a portion of 27th Street East in Brayton as Roberto Clemente Memorial Way out by Pirate City. This was a joint effort led by the city and with us as the county. So what I'd do is if Mayor, Mayor Brown, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Thank you, Chair, Ron, and the rest of the County Commission, City Administrator, City Attorney. One of the things that I think we've seen, kind of going through a lot, is the collaboration that we've been doing. So this is one of the things that obviously, it's a county road in the city limits, so anytime we can collaborate together and work together, which we've seen on City Park, where LeCom and the other things that are going on that we're working. So I know when Mr. Bishop and Commissioner Ballard went out and talked, it kind of came up, and it was like, hey, heck yeah, let's do it. So I just want to thank you for going through this opportunity, and next week we'll have a great celebration in naming that, obviously, to a, not only a baseball hero, but a country worldwide hero that unfortunately lost his life in a tragedy trying to help others in the other countries. So we just appreciate you doing it and continue, look forward to great success in our city and our county.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Elliot?
Oh, geez.
Don't take the mayor out in our building.
It's why we're there to catch them. Good morning, Commissioners. It's truly a privilege to be able to say something about Roberto Clemente being born and raised in Pittsburgh. And I have to tell you the story briefly. I was four years old when I was in the car with my parents and siblings, heard on the radio that, that he was killed in a plane crash, and it shocked the city. More interesting is that New Year's Eve night, there was a guy by the name of Tom Walker that was playing in the Puerto Rican Winter League for the Pittsburgh Pirates. And when he heard that Roberto Clemente was loading DC-7s to send those to Nicaragua to feed over 30,000 people in need and 10,000 deceased to care for their families, Tom said, "Roberto, I want to help you load the plane." So he did. Roberto told Tom that he was going to go on the DC-7 to go over to Nicaragua because he was finding out there was corruption. The military was, was diverting planes, and he wanted to make sure the supplies got there to the people. Tom wanted to go with Roberto on that flight. And Roberto said, "It's New Year's Eve, go party." And Tom said, "I really want to go with you." He goes, "No, you stay here." We all know what happened when that DC-7 took off. It crashed, Roberto died, and years later, Tom Walker had a son named Neil Walker, who was the Pirates' number-one draft pick. And in 2014, Neil Walker hit his 21st home run of the year on Roberto Clemente Day over the right field wall that was dedicated 21 feet with number 21 in right field with the Roberto Clemente, his wife and his kids at that game. We all know Roberto was a great man. Tom Walker, we lost him this past year to pancreatic cancer. I got to know him in the past five years, incredible human being. And Tom's son, Neil Walker, today, who's the color commentator for the Pirates, is a great man. So how, somebody who's unselfish like Roberto Clemente, he gave more than Nicaraguans he gave us, Tom and Neil Walker, that serves the community today. So wanted to share that story. It's pretty special, pretty surreal, and thank you for doing this. And one of, you all know the guy, Jeff Podobnik, and I, we've, we've known each other for a few years. We pretty much grew up together in the game and down here. So Jeff, would you like to say something?
Elliot's always got the stories, doesn't he? Yeah, Elliot and I, we've known each other for over 35 years. We started with the Pirates back in the late 80s together, but I just want to tell the quick story. I was touring Charlie Bishop and Amanda Ballard at Pirate City. It was like October, November last year, and we ended up out in front of our dining room, and I pointed out the, the street sign that went to nowhere, and it said Roberto Clemente Memorial Way. And Charlie asked, "Well, why is that out there?" And I explained to him, there, when Pirate City was first built, there used to be a road that went through our, our complex, and it was a county road. And when we rebuilt the, the complex in '08, that road went away. And Charlie's like, "Well, why don't we name 27th Street after Roberto Clemente?" And I said, "That's a great idea." And he said, "Well, I'll get with the mayor." I said, "Well, no, you don't. It's your road." So, and so here we are today, and I think it's a great tribute and honor, in honoring Roberto Clemente. His two sons will be there on the 21st. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I mean, it is kind of crazy that we're honoring him on the 21st, and his number's 21. So thank you all for moving this forward. We do need a motion, and we have motions made by Jason Bearden and seconded by Commissioner Ballard. If you'd vote now. We're having some technical difficulty, but they're fixing it. And the motion carries on the resolution to seven to zero. So thank you all very much, and we'll see you on the 21st out at Pirate City. Thank you. Coming up next, something we're all looking forward to, presentation on OnBase Agenda Online New Full Tech Search. So David, David, impress us. Impress us.
Good morning, Chairman.
Oh, functionality. I'm sorry.
Good morning, Chairman, County Administrator, Commission, County Attorney. So we're just going to show a quick demo of some of the new functionality in the Agenda Online website. Wanted to make you aware and the public aware of some of the new search functionality. So Quintana's going to help with our presentation today. She's gone to the manity.org and then up to the Government tab and then selecting BCC Minutes and Agendas. Here, it'll load into the Agenda page, and right now, we're going to click on View Upcoming Agendas, and that's going to take us to our OnBase Agenda Online. This is the normal view that you see typically when you log in to look at upcoming agendas and everything, but now we have this Meetings tab where it has some search functionality. So we'll go ahead and go there. The first box is a new one. It says Search. In here, you can put different topics that you would like to search for. If you use quotes around it, it's going to look for exact text. So Quintana's going to put in here Employee of the Month. The Meetings tab, Meeting Type, if you have a specific meeting that you're looking for, so say you know it's on a land use meeting, you can filter by that, or you can leave it blank, and it'll search all meeting types in the system. Okay? And then the next one is the Date Range. By default, it's going to show recent and upcoming, and that's going to be four weeks past and four weeks forward on the, on the search. Otherwise, you can have different dropdowns. You can put a custom date range in there if you know the, the timeframe of your meeting. So we're going to go ahead and hit Search here, and it's going to look through the agendas, and it's going to look for, oh, go ahead and refresh.
That's wild, that's not a...
Live demo. So it'll take a few seconds to search, and it'll pull up anything that has Employee of the Month in the description. The nice thing is it's not only looking through the description, if it's a text, so if it's a PDF or it's a Word document that's been uploaded, it's looking through all of the language in those documents for that text. So it gives you a really dynamic way to search for, for agenda items and documents that have been attached to our agenda. Just as a note, this is from February 22nd, 2021, when we went live with the system. So anything from that date moving forward into the future will have the search functionality. So that's pretty much the demo showing some of the new functionality and everything. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy.
Anyone have any questions of David and?
I'm on the board.
Yeah, mine's messing up. Hang on a minute. I can't see who's on the board. There, it's come back up.
Yeah, I just want to thank all of you, everyone at IT, everyone in the Clerk's Office. I know I kind of threw this out at you last year after seeing how efficient Sarasota was while I was trying to look for some things on our system and couldn't. I know it was a lot of effort. You kind of did it in a way that was better than Sarasota's relative to using one software instead of cobbling two different softwares together like they do. I know you guys have spent a lot of time training for it and preparing for it. So I just want to thank you. I think this is going to be hugely beneficial to everybody. If you're a citizen, like, almost immediately, you can go look at the summary and see who made every motion, who made every vote for everything in, in almost real time, you know, within what, 24 hours?
Yeah, the Clerk's Office is trying to get those out.
Yeah, so, so you can get a summary of all of our meetings very quickly instead of waiting months for minutes to show up on the Clerk's thing. If you're up here on the dais, if we're doing research for anything coming up on the agenda, we can look at previous things. If your staff, you go, I, I just think this is great. This is hugely beneficial to everybody, and I just thank you all. I know it was a lot of work, and you guys, really, you're constantly keeping me up to date on where you stood and trying to make sure you were getting this done as quick as possible, and I'm very happy with it. So thank you very much, David.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments, quotes? Thank you, David.
All right.
We look forward to using it. Up next is our presentation on the Veterans Memorial Park, and Deputy Administrator Parnell is going to make that presentation.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney. I'm Brian Parnell, Deputy County Administrator. This is an informational presentation introducing a concept for Manatee County Veterans War Memorial Park. In conjunction with presenting the concept, I have a request for approval of some initial funding to move forward with more detailed planning, design, and initial construction activities. The goal is to create a park that not only honors our veterans, past and present, but also provides a location to learn, remember, and reflect on our nation's history and the wars that forged it. Although Manatee County prides itself in being the home for more than 40,000 veterans, we don't currently have a cultural center or park such as this that pays tribute to their service and those that came before. I'm going to kick this off with a short video that our Deputy Director for Parks and Grounds put together, which lays out the concept for this 24-acre parcel of land off of Buckeye Road. Video provides orientation of the site location, general features of the park concept design, and inspiration from a similar successful model up in Hillsborough County. And with that, we'll play the video.
Hey, Brian, just a quick update on Manatee Memorial Park. Just to give you an idea of where we're at, this is Buffalo Creek Park here, and this is the 24-acre property on Buckeye Road. So if you come down Moccasin Wallow, you can get through here down Carter, or you can come up here and go down Buckeye. The cool thing about this location is that everything is booming up in here. There's housing development, shopping centers all over the place. So this is an ideal location for Manatee Memorial Park. Here's another look at it. There's a total of 24 acres. It's 5431 Buckeye Road. This is an image I wanted to show you how dense it is. This is a street view. We do have some gopher tortoise issues out here. It's been surveyed, and also abandoned home out here as well. Here are some more images. We did get in there, and we did some clearing. This house, abandoned house, is now gone. Did some clearing so we can get some aerial images and get our survey done. This is the Veterans Memorial Park and Museum in Hillsborough County, and we took some ideas from this park here and incorporated it in our design. Here are some images from that Hillsborough Memorial Park. It's a beautiful site. And this is our latest rendering and design, really, really cool layout. This is the entrance area here, plenty of parking all over the place at all of these locations. This is the Veterans Center right here. Beautiful 12,000-square-foot Veterans Center welcome area. And then we have these paths and trails that come through here that you can drive through and park. It's ADA compliant throughout. There's a gazebo right here, there's a stormwater pond, and a giant pavilion. There's also a maintenance building on site to take care of the property. All of these little pink dots in here are all the 30 memorials which are over here. And the coolest thing that I like about this park is that they have a meandering trail that kind of cuts through the wetlands here, all around the perimeter of the park. And then my favorite is the salute to flags for each branch of service, which is right So here are all the 30 memorials that are in the park, and here are all the amenities. If you hit the pause button, you can take a look at them. And that's it. If you have any questions, let me know. Thanks.
As you see, we're starting with a very grand vision for this park. All the features incorporated in the concept will work together to provide immersive experience for visitors. However, we know that this will take some time to fully develop, so we'll need to ensure that we plan the project strategically so we can build it in complete and usable phases. To accomplish that, master planning and design, I'm bringing a request for approval of $4 million. As we move forward with this project, we will be seeking out all opportunities available for grant funding, and certainly will welcome, encourage, and incorporate any other outside fundraising sources as well. That concludes my presentation. I'll stand by for comments and questions.
All right, thank you, sir. First on the board is Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all the hard work, Brian, that you all... I appreciate all the hard work, Brian, that you all have worked so diligently on this particular project. This is going to be a park like no other, right? And those that took the ultimate sacrifice deserve our best and that's what we're doing here with this park here in Manatee County. And so, I just, I'm so thankful and grateful in us coming together on this because I think this is so important and this is going to be a park that's going to be known in the state of Florida. So, that's all I have as of right now and I'd like to make a motion to approve $4 million in funding for planning, design, and some initial construction activities.
All right, we had a motion and a second to recommend approved funding of $4 million for the plan design and some of the initial construction activities at the Veterans Memorial Park. Commissioner Bearden moved it. Commissioner Satcher seconded it. And then what we're going to do is we're going to vote and then we'll, Commissioner Cruz is next and then we'll, after that, we'll open up for public comment. If everyone could cast their votes now.
We're going to vote before we even talk?
Well, I mean, the motion was made and seconded. All right, go ahead.
What are we spending the $4 million? I mean, we designed bridges for $4 million. If you told me this whole park was being, because we're not building, the greater concept of this park, when it was discussed, and I'm fully on board with the park, and when we discussed it last summer or spring, when this first came up, we're not building any of the monuments. We're just, we're just putting empty space there and allowing people, sort of like Gettysburg Battlefield and I believe Hillsborough, where people can come in and donate monuments and people can raise money for it. So, we're basically building sidewalks and clearing land and putting some landscaping in. If you told me the whole park costs $4 million, I'd be curious where the $4 million went. What are we spending $4 million on for design for this park? And how's that relative to the design work we've done at other parks?
The $4 million actually is not the total estimate. The estimate is for the design for the entire master plan is less than $4 million. However, the $4 million gives us flexibility to do that design and put together, put together design in phases so that we could even possibly get a Phase One initiated and completed. So, it gives us flexibility, but we need to have the design, the master plan sort of grow before we can...
What's our rough estimate of the total cost?
The total cost from our, from our architect is $30 million for the entire park.
Without the monuments, that's $30 million for the ponds and the sidewalks?
For all of the civil site work, the resource center, the wetlands, boardwalk, and all of the pads for all of the monuments.
And where's the funding bucket for this? I know you said we're going to look for grants wherever, but if we're spending, if we're authorizing $4 million, you're spending $4 million whether you find grants or not. We're not finding grants and matching funds and public-private partnerships prior to spending $4 million. We're authorizing, in theory, you walk out this door and spend $4 million this afternoon if you wanted to based on this vote. So, where is the funding bucket if we have to pay the whole $30 million?
Sheila's right behind you.
Thanks.
And Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to say a few words.
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sheila McLean, CFO, Manatee County. So, the idea of this memorial is far exceeds a couple of different phases and bringing forward a design that encompasses all of the ideas that we would like at this moment to, for this memorial to be. So, the $4 million right now, the phase and the design is around roughly $2 million because of the concept that is right now, okay? Design normally is like usually roughly 10% of the total cost. So, we would be saying that perhaps the idea that administration would bring forward would be totally a total cost of 30, 40 million dollars. Faced out in several years, it will include memorials, it will include some community center, I would say, sort of. It will include some tiny homes, but of course, this is going to take...
Nope.
Oh, sorry. I misspoke. So, the idea today is to fund it out of the general fund and because, and the reason why is because in the future, as Mr. Parnell has spoken, we are looking for opportunities of maybe some grants, some donations and contributions. And the general fund being the most unrestricted fund, we don't want to be able to utilize any other type of funding source that could potentially endanger the use of a funding source that is restricted, like it would be impact fees or things like that. So, because grants also have other type of Florida statute requirements like the 2CFR 200 and so forth, that's why we are offering this unrestricted funding source at this point to be able to leverage better ourselves in the future without causing any constraints.
All right, so the actual design work anticipation is $2 million and we're approving $4 million. That's what you just said. We're, it's about $2 million.
Yes, sir. So, the other differential would actually give the, it's two and a half, so the other differential will give the opportunity for maybe construction of Phase One to move forward faster as the design is over. Or if there is something else that comes along the way with an increment of opportunity of another structure or so forth, we, they are ready and moving with the dollars and the funding in the project to move forward with that.
And Mr. Chair, I want to remind you that this 24 acres was land that we already owned, the county already owned it. It was under our surplus property. Also, I want to remind the CFO that we sold $2.4 million off of TeleVas that was surplus property that we had earmarked towards this property. Also, I want to remind the board that we had an opportunity to speak to our Congressman. We have potentially appropriations of $3 million per year over the next several years that we're asking for. Also, want to let the board know, I've had two conversations with fundraiser and opportunities. One very prominent and local that has put his time and effort into helping us raise money for this. So, the $4 million is to get us off the ground with 100% design and some construction so it looks like the project, not looks like, it will make the project viable and it will make the project more appeasing for those grant writing and fundraising abilities.
Thank you, Administrator.
All right. I think we should be approving the actual design cost and I know it's not our money and we can just throw other people's money around, but giving an extra million and a half excess just in case we want to get started faster due to the time sensitivity of a park seems like a bit much. Now, I'd much prefer this to be a two and a half million dollar recommended motion to actually do the design, which does create the viability, does create the opportunity for fundraising, does create the opportunity for grants, and then bring that design back to not only us but to the public to explain what the final design was so we can approve the full funding and figure out the funding source for it, which is how we do virtually everything else. We typically don't design things and then throw on a 50%, 100% increase of contingency to allow us to start putting pilings in for a bridge before we know where the bridge is going to be or start widening roads before we discuss the design. I think that's a little silly, but it is what it is. I prefer it to be just the design cost instead of the flexibility, but you know, I do support the project, so I would like to see this move forward and hopefully between Representative Buchanan and others, we can get some funding from someplace else because there's a lot of needs for $30 million that we haven't really discussed.
Thank you, sir. Next on the board is Commissioner Van Ostenbridge.
I just want to state that I think this is a great project. I want to thank staff for the work that they're doing, thank the Administrator for the work that he's doing on the project and Commissioner Bearden as well. I think you have a clear path to seeing this through to fruition. If you, and we've discussed it behind closed doors, that you think that $4 million gives you flexibility moving forward. I think it's a good idea. We've hired an administration here that is conscious of the fact that we're dealing with tax dollars, that we're dealing with other people's money, and they operate with that in mind. We, the board, are here to oversee them and to ensure that they don't waste tax dollars and we'll do that. Commissioner Bearden is spearheading the project. There's no more fiscal conservative person than Commissioner Bearden, so I'm sure that he's not going to oversee a big effort to waste taxpayer money. So, I just want you to know that I'm supportive of you and I hope that the whole board ultimately is. We have one Commissioner that's trying to sort of seek attention and throw grenades constantly and sort of campaign from the dais and I'm sorry that staff ended up tied up in the middle of it, but sometimes that happens and I'm not going to sit here all day and do this with him. I'm going to call the question now on this item. Commissioner?
The question's been called. There's been a second. All those in favor of calling the question, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the question's been called. So, County Attorney, do I need to open up public comment on the call to question?
No, but you do need to on the general motion.
Okay. So, what I'd like to do now is, well, Commissioner Ballard's up.
The discussion was over.
Discussion's over. So, I would like to do now is call, if there's anyone that would like to give public comment regarding the motion on, the recommended motion for approving the $4 million for funding and planning and design and some initial construction activities on this item, please come forward, state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Glenn Gibleena, for the record. I have a few letters I'd like to enter into the record concerning this project. I'm not against the project. I'm against the funding of it and I'm against the timing of it. This project is not ready for prime time as far as I'm concerned. It's in a bad location. We could have picked a better location, but more importantly, $4 million, right? We get all these funds of money and we still have not addressed the elephant in the room, which are homeless vets. You know, maybe in two years, when this project is done, some of these homeless vets might have died and we'll at least still have a place for them, right? It's unbelievable that we are not addressing, this is back in March...
Sir, can we stay on the motion?
I am. I'm talking about the funding for the motion.
Right.
It's excessive. With George, pare it back to a million and a half or two and a half million and use the other million and a half to house the 86 known homeless vets that we have now that this board has done nothing. Tunnels the Towers is two years away, Jason. You're leaving Marines homeless every day. This board has done nothing. It's my three minutes. I want to reclaim my time. This is for the record, so the public has to hear you, Jason. You want to repeat what you said?
Jason, don't dialogue.
Don't dialogue. Then just be quiet while I have my three minutes. May not like what I have to say, but I have a right to say it. We need to take care of the veterans first and foremost. This is, this, this, this project is not well thought out. The location's bad. The money is excessive. You have no idea where the $30 million is coming from. You sold a park for two and a half million dollars to a gas station. You could have said, hey, maybe we use some of that money to home, to house the vets until tunnels the prod, tunnels is done. You haven't done that. You haven't, you haven't, you haven't given the funding that the homeless vets need. And I'm going to be up here again on future comments and you can explain why we have not funded the homeless vets, for the record.
State, you know the rule, state your name.
Andrew Griffin, Manatee County activist. I think this project is an amazing project, but I have to, I'm a conservative. I don't, I don't like spending money and I don't like spending taxpayer money and I don't like spending my money. So, with that being said, I would, I have to agree in part with George too. There's like $1.5 million here that's unaccounted for. I would like to kind of see where that does go. Just for, you know, transparency purposes, I just don't like, you know, carte blanche signing something or approving something without seeing where every single penny is sent. I mean, that's what I do. So, I do approve, I do agree with this project. I think it's a great project and thank you for all the hard work that went into this. Thank you, George, for bringing those valuable points up.
Thank you, ma'am. Morning, sir. State your name, county residence, and you have three minutes and I like your hat.
Thank you. He gave it to me. He gave it to me because 17 years ago, from a week from Thursday, my son was killed in Iraq. I'm a Gold Star father. I've had some interesting opportunities over the years.
Yeah, could you please state your name and county residence?
My name is Chris Hager.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
And you're Manatee County, correct?
Manatee County.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I was privileged to lay the first wreath when Sarasota National Cemetery was opened. There's a Bible verse that says in Exodus, "A king arose in Egypt who did not know Joseph." And I won't go into details, but what it means is if we lose the memory of the history of the people that made our country great, we are destined to be washed in the sea when the walls come back in as it did to Egypt. The one thing that kills every Gold Star family is to be ignored and forgotten. The governor of Florida did a great thing in seven, in his first year, he signed a bill that allowed for the honor and remember flag to be the official flag of remembrance in Florida. We were the 26th state to do so, but Florida hadn't bought any flags. We never see it flying. I have a Gold Star license plate on my car. Fed it for 14 years. In 14 years, two people have recognized what the flag, the license plate meant. We have forgotten, not only our vets who need your help now, we have forgotten those who shed blood voluntarily to save this country. It is to me the greatest obligation of government to recognize and do honor to those, not me. I didn't do anything, but my son did. His job was to bring all of his boys back. They all came back. I've buried three of them, one to heroin, one to liver failure from alcohol, and one to suicide. The young man that committed suicide, his suicide note said, "What he couldn't live with was having seen my son die." These remembrances, these experiences last a lifetime. They do not go away, but you can make a difference. A small difference is still a difference because it never gets better. It does get different. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your son's service. Yes, ma'am. State your name, county residence. You know the rule. You know the game.
Hi, Carol Phelps, Myakka City. A few months ago, I attended a town hall that Mr. Bearden held in Lakewood Ranch and first I want to say thank you for the gentleman who spoke before. I'm an Army mom. My son was wounded in Egypt. We do a lot to honor our veterans and probably the biggest thing we could do is to make sure that what they fought for continues, that they fought for our freedoms, that they fought for our right to speak, to be a part of our government, and to have our voices heard. I could think of no other way to honor them but to practice those principles that they fought for. A park is a wonderful thing. When Mr. Bearden had his town hall, he took great pains to pass this document out to all of us so that we could see the vision that he had, which none of us disagree with. But I asked a question then. I said, "How much did this cost?" And Mr. Bearden said, "Two million." And I said, "No, I don't mean the park. I mean this piece of paper." How much time and trouble was taken to produce this wonderful piece of artwork and hand it out to people and print it up that might have ended up in the trash can in our landfill, but I kept mine because this does mean something. But I think we could do it a little bit more prudently. I think we could exercise a dedication to our veterans by being better citizens, by being better representatives. A statue in a park does not honor our veterans. What honors our veterans is when we uphold those rights that they fought for. And I would like for the board to be prudent in how they spend our money. You've already got the land. Let's see what the public could do. Ronald Reagan was one of our greater presidents. He talked about the trickle-down theory. Well, maybe part of that'll trickle down. If you manage our taxes, if you manage our... If you manage our taxes, if you manage our money wisely, we have more money to put into our causes and our altruistic endeavors. Give us this park. Give us a natural piece of land that we can build. We have so many great veterans groups, people who would do this, we'll bring in those statues, we'll help manicure, that we'll do for our veterans directly from us, but by taking our tax dollars, that this went from how much money to produce this piece of paper, that how many people to that meeting, threw that in the trash, and it's now sitting in our landfill. And you said two million, and now we want four million just for design. We're going to talk later on about citizens advisory committees. Let them come in on this and save our taxpayers' dollars for how we want it spent.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, state your name and county address, and you have three minutes.
Keith Green, Manatee County. First, before I would like to speak, I would like to thank the gentleman for telling his story and for being a Gold Star parent. Thank you, thank you. Next, I would like to say as someone who was the son of a Vietnam veteran, the nephew of a Vietnam veteran, that coming and saying that we should, you know, go through the whole process of limiting what kind of funds for a memorial such as this to honor those who have put all of us on the line, is, in my opinion, reprehensible. I would also like to say, as someone who has also had the honor and the privilege of laying a wreath at the tomb of the unknown soldier years ago, how much it just saddens me to see so many people here who say that they honor veterans, but yet they want to put a price tag on it. When it comes to our veterans, we need to speak up for them. Not only that, we need to pay honor to them. So anyone that has decided to come here and want to politicize this as they have just done, should truly be ashamed of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, sir, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, County Commissioners, Charlie Bishop, our county administrator, and the people and the citizens of Manatee County. I am Carl Hunter, and I am a citizen of Manatee County, and I'm not an activist, I'm an advocate. Minnesota Veterans, I'm the president of, and we advocate for all of our veterans or families in anything that relates to that within our community. That includes teaching our children the Constitution, and what those monuments will mean when the school buses show up and it becomes part of their classes, which is missing, if you pay attention to Florida statute law, there's a requirement to teach that. And so we can help our education system do that. So it is more than just for our veterans, and it does mean a lot, and the fact that we're starting with the Revolutionary War moving forward, we are telling the history of the United States and all the service of this country, and what freedom, the flag that's, that's up behind Commissioner Bearden right now, what that means, and what all of us that did serve, I served 31 years active duty, I had three combat missions, an Air Force retired that did not fly aircraft, I did gun truck security in Iraq at a Mosul, we got shot at it every time we went down the road, all the way from Baghdad to the Turkish border, to Kurdish territory. I'm here to tell you, this is about all of us, this is the citizens of Manatee County, and what it'll represent, it will take years to build, it'll take more money to make that happen, and we know how inflation goes, it will continue to add and add and add. We'll plan on that. I would like to see, stand up a committee so that we can see this through, and I would like Minnesota veterans to have a member on that committee, and we will make sure that we are good stewards, as all of you are good stewards of the funds. I do like to comment, there's, it's priceless, there should be no price, but there has to be, you've got to be stewards of the, of the funds of Manatee County and all the taxpayers. But this represents everybody, not just our veterans. And Minnesota veterans, we do, if there's a need for approval, we do agree with the concept, but when we get into the weeds, that's what your committee does, and we'll work our way through it. Let's get the concept approved, let's get some money approved, and let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Is there anyone else that would like to have public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. The motion to approve was made by Commissioner Bearden, seconded by Commissioner Satcher. If you please cast your votes now. And the motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much, thank you, staff. All right. That does it for the presentations, but we're going to go into proclamations next, but I would like to have a motion to approve all the proclamation, or adopt, adopt the proclamations.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you. We're trying to get it all. All right, the motion's been approved by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, and seconded by Commissioner Ballard. If you'll cast your votes now. And the motion carries on the proclamations. First up is adoption and presentation of proclamation designating February 17th through the 24th as Florida Cracker Trail Ride Week in Manatee County, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Satcher to make that presentation. JR Satcher. And I think we have two gentlemen that are, that are here right there, come on up, guys.
Howdy, everyone.
Come on.
These two guys are here.
If you're a Florida cracker, you should be up there.
Good to see you, how are you?
This proclamation from the Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida. Whereas, in the early 1500s, Spanish conquistador Juan Pont St. Leon landed on the shores of Florida in an attempt to colonize. Thwarted by Native Americans, the colonists abandoned their quest, leaving behind the first livestock in North America, horses, hogs, and Andalusian cattle. And whereas, by the 1800s, as settlers moved south, so did the cattle, searching for new pastures. And whereas, following the Civil War, early settlers along Florida's east coast and central corridor became known as Florida crackers, cracker cowmen, or cow hunters. The crackers relied on bullwhips to flush cows out of the Palmetto scrub and spur on oxen that pulled their carts and wagons. The snaps of these whips would break the sound barrier, making a loud crack. This sound earned the cowmen the nickname of the crackers. And whereas, each year, the crackers gathered west of Fort Pierce to drive their herd of scrub cattle west across the state toward Bradenton, and then to Tampa, Punta Gorda, and Punta Rasa, to ship them to Cuba. The Cracker Trail was the only dry route across Florida. And whereas, in 1987, a group of individuals came together to form the Florida Cracker Trail Association to create a part of Florida's past that has become a traditional event. The annual cross-state ride is a reenactment of the return trip from Bradenton to Fort Pierce. It commemorates the dedication of the Florida Cracker Trail and honors the cracker cowmen and their history. And whereas, the 2024 Cross-State Ride will be held February 17th through February 24th, 2024. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that February 17th through 24th, 2024 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Florida Cracker Trail Ride Week in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 13th day of February 2024, signed by the Chairman of the Board, Mike Ron, Commissioner Mike Ron.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Can I speak?
Absolutely.
Good morning, my name's Robert Wolf, thank you, Board. This is my President, Mike Harrison, and also Carolyn, she's been, did the ride many years ago. You know, Florida's very rich in history, and what started history was right here in Manatee County. Well, back in 1521, Hernando de Soto brought cattle in here, also Ponce de Leon in 1515. But we honor, try to keep this history together, we do this ride every year. I am the trail boss this year, and I've been assistant trail boss for many years, this is my 20th ride. But yeah, we start right here at Kibler Ranch, and we start off, and we ride all the way to Fort Pierce, and different ranches host us along the way. And this has been going on now, this will be our 37th year. So yeah, thank you very much for proclamation, and everybody, don't get upset when the roads are kind of screwed up when we go through town, because we won't, we won't be there very long, we'll move through. And, and we would like to get more people to come to us and come see us. So we leave out at Kibler Ranch on 64 on Sunday morning to our first area ride, going from there to Hardy County. But on Saturday morning, we'll have a small band leave out at 15th Street there in Bradenton at the museum, and we will ride down 64 and end up at Morgan Johnson Road on 64. So y'all come out and see us when we go by, and thank you very much.
Sir, how many riders do you have this year riding?
We have 178 that's registered. I don't know how many we'll ride, but it will probably be somewhere in the area of 150.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big undertaking, we have a big board, we have, it's, it takes a lot of people to get this going on, and you know, that's, that's one thing I do, is I try to keep this history alive for as long as we can, and thank you.
And how long is the ride from start to finish, from here to Fort Pierce?
Somewhere around 135 to 138 miles.
Wow.
We usually do about 20, a little over 20 miles a day.
Okay. Is there any soreness in the saddle, though?
Oh, you end up figuring all kinds of ways to sit in a saddle.
Well, thank you, we appreciate you all very much, and keeping the history alive, being a third-generation Floridian, I truly appreciate.
I'm a fifth-generation Floridian.
Well, thank you, sir, and we appreciate everything you guys do and everything you represent here in the state of Florida in Manatee County, so we're proud to give this proclamation to you, so thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you on the road.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, up next, the next proclamation, oh, sorry, Carol, I'm sorry.
Um, the other, the other thing I'd like for y'all to know that we're, we chose to honor our veterans this year. Last year, we invited the Board of County Commissioners, I believe we also gave y'all a copy of the book, A Land Remembered. If any of you do not have a copy of the book of A Land Remembered, it used to be required reading for our Manatee County fourth and fifth graders. This year, we've chosen to honor our veterans. We'll have John Skeen riding one of our wagons, our wagon master that drives that buckboard with the two mules is also an Army veteran, we'll be having an Army veteran's wife joining us. And outside that same day, the town of Manatee is one of our historical areas, my kin itself settled that area. The same day, the Reflections of Manatee will be having a history talk. We'd like to see the county give us a little bit more recognition with this, as you've recently taken over our historical aspects into Parks and Leisure Services. We'd like to make sure that when this ride is over, we're going to show you what Fort Pierce does for the Cracker Trail riders, and we'd like to see that done in Manatee County one day.
All right.
But we hope you'll come out to the parade, advertise it on our county website, so we have more people understanding why there's 50 horses on the road on Saturday.
Yes, ma'am, I advise y'all to reach out to Molly White, who is our Director of Parks and Leisure, or Rex and Leisure, and I'm sure she'd love to talk to you about it, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next is the 42nd Annual Cortez Commercial Fishing Festival Days, and that's always fun to go to that event. And up to give the proclamation is Commissioner Van Austin Bridge.
Okay. So I'm joined by former Commissioner Jane Von Homan, who used to be the District Three Commissioner and former Chair of the Board. So this proclamation is for the Cortez Fishing Festival. Whereas 42 years have come and gone, and still our party with a purpose carries on, with music, art, and seafood galore served to thousands along the shore. And whereas, the Florida Institute for Saltwater Heritage and Cortez Village Historical Society report that commercial fishing is a way of life, and Cortez fishing families celebrate over 140 years of feeding the multitudes. And whereas, the Florida Institute for Saltwater Heritage, the large-scale Habitat Restoration Project of the Fish Preserve, the largest and last undeveloped stretch of shoreline on Sarasota Bay, and whereas, the theme for 2024 festival is commercial fishing, it's a way of life. And whereas, the 42nd Annual Cortez Fishing Festival will be held on February 17th and 18th, 2024. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County that February 17th and 18th, 2024 shall be known, designated, and set aside as the 42nd Annual Cortez Commercial Fishing Festival Days in Manatee County, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 13th day of February 2024, and signed by our chairperson, Mike Ron. I turn it over to Commissioner Von Homan.
Thank you, thank you so much. We're so glad to be here again, we've been here for so many years coming forward. We wish we had more of our board members here with us, but some are out fishing, some are actually down in Charlotte County at a hearing on some things that have to do with fisheries, so we're, but we're glad we're here, and we do invite you. You have had an incredible meeting this morning, the Veterans Memorial Park, the Cracker Trail, it's all about history, that is what just blows me away, just sitting here for one hour, I've heard so much about history.
Reverend Paul M. Bay, too.
Exactly, and I'm not a big sport fan, so I apologize, that's, yeah, that one kind of passed me by, I'm sorry. But true, it's just so very true, and Cortez is a piece of that history here in Manatee County, it's such a very special place, and we appreciate all the county always does to support us in maintaining that special place that we are with the, the commercial fishing industry, the history that is there. We just are so excited to be here, and our festival supports the Preserve and the Fisherman's Hall, which we own, and the Volunteer Firehouse that we own in Cortez, that keeps our history alive and that heartbeat in that village beating, because it's never easy to protect what came before us. It's never easy, it's easier to just make it new. But you know what? If you don't know where you came from, you can't know where you're going. So we thank you very much for being there, we hope all the new commissioners, please come out and see us. I know it's a very busy weekend with the regatta here and thunder on the bay, but we hope you do come out, and we're asking you all to lift it up for all of us, so that we could have some good weather this weekend. I know it's going to be a challenge, because it's not looking good, but you know what? They say, "Do or more ask it in his name, it can be done." So I'm, I'm asking everybody to ask it for us, so that we have a good festival. I do have some passes, and I just, with the new setup.
I'll take care of those, don't worry.
Okay. But we thank you very much, and I'm going to let Angela give you some of the real statistics about who we are and what we are in the village.
Thank you, thanks, Jane. Yeah, my name's Angela Collins, good morning, I'm with the University of Florida and Florida Sea Grant, and I'm also a member of the Fish Board. Florida Sea Grant and University of Florida Institute of Food and Agricultural Sciences has been involved with the Fish Board and the Cortez Commercial Fishing Festival since the very first one, 42 years ago, so we have a long relationship and history with commercial fishing. I think it's really important to remember, not only this party with a purpose is really fun and celebrates our history, but it also celebrates some really important economic contributions for the state of Florida. Saltwater fisheries contribute over almost $7 billion to the state of Florida economy every single year. It supports almost, commercial fishing by itself supports over 7,000 jobs. We land over 100 million pounds of seafood in Florida, and 70% of that comes from the Gulf Coast. And you can't land seafood without valuable working waterfront space, right? So these fishermen need a place to land that seafood, so it has an enormous economic contribution to the state of Florida, in addition to being a really valuable part of our past. So the Commercial Fishing Festival is an excellent way to celebrate that heritage and see that working waterfront and take a step back in time, celebrate the people that bring that seafood to you every year and work so hard behind the scenes to put those fish sandwiches on the plates of the people of the state of Florida. So come on out this weekend.
Hello, everybody, my name is Alex Garner, fourth-generation Manatee County resident. My grandfather and great-granduncle started Starfish Company out there in Cortez Village. My father is when he started the Fish, Florida Institute for Saltwater Heritage, and every year I get asked by friends after the Fish Festival happens, nobody invited me. So this is me telling you, as your friend, as your friend, as your friend, whoever's watching, as your friend, I'm inviting you, please come out to the Fish Festival, the Commercial Fishing Festival, it's always an awesome time, it's a great party for a purpose, so love to see you there.
I just have to tell you, we're all touting our heritage here, and I'm only a second-generation Floridian, my husband is fifth, which makes my boys sixth. I'm good.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for all you do with the Fish Preserve. That's a great place, if nobody's visited it yet, you should visit the Fish Preserve, it's really cool to go out there.
We have just finished the fourth phase of actual ground construction, so we are actually done with earth moving now, thanks to funds that done with earth moving now, thanks to funds that we received through Sarasota Bay Estuary Program and the federal funding. And we are now, have been honored to receive a grant that will finish our trails and a bridge, and we're excited because we are so hopeful after this long, long journey that it will be easily accessible for the public within the next year and a half or so. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Your support.
Everyone, go out to the Cortez Fish Festival. It's a lot of fun. It's a great time, believe me. I was going there before I was a commissioner, way back when, so it's a great time. So thank you very much, Commissioner.
Is there any video of you there before you were a commissioner?
No, there's not. Thank God.
Yeah, I just want to thank them for coming and kind of echo the words of the Chair and say, you know, Cortez is, I'm fortunate to represent the best district in the county, and Cortez is one of the examples of why it is the best district in the county, and so much great history there. It's, it's a little gem within Manatee County that we have to do what we can to preserve. And I just want to say that the Fish Organization, they don't just throw a party, you know, and hang out and that's it, not by any means. The Fish Preserve, if you're driving in towards Cortez Village, it's on your left-hand side on the bay, that, that is their legacy project. It's certainly Jane's legacy project. And I just want to say to the organization, anything that, you know, obviously we're members of Sarasota Estuary Program, and so we, we help in that regard, but anything else that the county can do to help with that Fish Preserve, you know, we're only a phone call away. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all. Appreciate it. All right, up next is, what we're going to go through is Citizens Comment. We do have a timed certain item at 10:30, so we will start Citizens Comment, and anyone that would like to come up and say a few words on future agenda items, please come forward, state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes until 10:30. We have to time certain. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, good morning. My name is Michael Hartford. I'm a Manatee County resident. I want to talk a little bit about the issue with respect to homeless veterans. I have been on the State of Florida Governor's Challenge Task Force for four years now. I was on President Trump's Prevents Task Force, and I served in the military for 39 years. I'm a former soldier, sailor, and airman.
Wow. Thank you, sir.
And when I look at the data as it relates to veteran suicides in homeless veterans, there's a strong correlation. In 2001, about 23 out of 100,000 veterans committed suicide. Fast forward, it's now 33 per 100,000, 50% higher than the citizen population of this country. If you look at those suffering from invisible wounds is what, is what I do for a living. I provide care for traumatic brain injuries and other invisible wounds with an organization that has seven traumatic brain injury sites nationwide. That went from what was 10 to 20 per 100,000 to almost 90 per 100,000. And it takes a village to address the homeless and the suicide veteran population. And I want to encourage the Board to really reach out to the community, to work with the state, to work with the federal government, to work with the nonprofit organizations, all of those that are interested, because it has to be a grassroots approach. The Veteran Governors Council, Governors Challenge Council that I'm, that I'm on with the state of Florida, we've just recently had two public service announcements that we'll be rolling out. We're doing all kinds of initiatives, and there's an initiative that I would encourage all board members and the county to consider, and that be a Veteran Safe Place Work Environment. There's an organization that has partnered with the state to provide the kinds of training to organizations and to individuals so that you become more aware of what those things are, that you can intervene before it's too late. And it's not just the veteran population at risk, but also the civilian population. So I would be happy to be a conduit to make that happen. I, I think it's important, and I don't know what the funding situation is between now and when Tunnel to Towers is actually up and running, but I would encourage if there's resources that are available that are needed, that we make those resources available so that we can really collaborate well together and make a huge impact in decreasing those numbers in Manatee County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Feel free to reach out to myself, Commissioner Bearden, or Commissioner Ballard, or any of the Commissioners, even our county administrator, and give us your information, because I would like to further have a conversation with you. And I'm sure that we would also, so. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Mr. Chair, actually, Andy Butterfield's standing to my right would like to get the information from the gentleman.
Yeah, okay. Can you guys kind of coordinate? Andy, can you get with this gentleman and get all this information? Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes. You know, you've been there before. You know the, you know the rules.
Pets, Simmons, Manatee County. I'm here again just to remind you, I really appreciated what he said about people with TBI's, traumatic brain injury, because that's a part of a person with a disability. And it's not only veterans, but there's, there's other people, like my friend in California due to a motorcycle accident. All people with, there, hold on, there are 70,000 people at some 2021 census, people with disabilities in Manatee County. That's roughly 14% of the population, and yet, we don't have a voice in this county, this state, actually, in this nation. Two of my heroes are Gabby Gifford and center talking sports, Steve McMichael. He was at the defense of the Super Bowl winning Chicago Bears back in 85, and through nothing that he caused, he now has Lou Gehrig's disease, and he can smile, he can work a computer with his eyes, but he cannot like her talk, move, or breathe on his own. He was just inducted into, inducted into the Hall of Fame, and he said he wasn't going to die until he gets inducted. And his tenacity and his strength has given me the strength to keep going with this because we need a voice in this county. And like Bobby Kennedy said, just bear with me. Some, some people see things as they are and say, "Why?" I dream things that were never, that never were and say, "Why not? So, why not? Let's get this." I understand that you're going through all the citizens' advisory boards, and I certainly didn't mean to open a pen towards Fox, but now that it's open, please don't forget about me. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, ma'am. Yes, sir. You know the rules.
Carl Hunzinger, Manatee County citizen, and, and Mr. Chair, Commissioners, County Administrator, what Navy Captain Mike Hartford said earlier, and what this young lady here said just a second ago, that's many things. In the leadership role that I served in military and combat and actually dealing with death and many other things, I learned to compartmentalize, to keep my emotions from, from the actionable things that I do, and it's not an easy thing, trust me. So I will say this much, we do need to keep that in the front of our homeless veterans, but also the many other things that relate to that. We don't really have a good sight picture on the true number of homeless. We really don't have that, and we need to do a good job of coming up with a way of accountability of that, because it is our responsibility, it's a responsibility of all human beings to make sure our fellow human beings are taken care of, certainly those that serve this country. A lot of things going on up inside that head, and you never know when it's their last breath coming up the next day or that moment. So there's a lot of, lot of things that we can do to prevent that, and it's about being preventative, not reactive. We need to get away from reactive and start preventing these things, and it's going to take every community in the United States to do that, but this is our community, and we have an opportunity to do something about that. So let's, let's get that on in a future agenda. Let's come up with a plan and maybe even some funding to support that, however you juggle that, but we need to do something because nothing happens until something moves, and we need to move on this and make it right by those that serve this country. And you know, we say, "Made the ultimate sacrifice on the battlefield." They're dying off the battlefield in this country, on our soil, because of the battlefield and many things that relate to that. And not even the battlefield, those that served behind the lines deal with it just the same. So let's, let's get that on, let's get that down, and let's do something with it, and let's have an agenda item in the future, and maybe develop another committee for that, because you're not going to do it by yourself. You're going to need folks around you, subject matter experts, those SMEs, to help you make those decisions. Good, common sense decisions, but well thought out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Andrew Griffin, Manatee County activist. I'm here advocating for children this morning. As you guys read my shirt, it says, "Mommy, Why Was I Not Good Enough?" This is from a Quinton Simon case in Savannah, Georgia, where a child was brutally abused up until his death at 20 months, 20 month years old, and, or 20 months old. So I know there's a lot of people talking about homeless vets, and I'm going to talk about children. I think homeless vets need to be protected by the people as well as our children here in, in the state of Florida, in Manatee County, as well as across the country. And so I never hear conversations related to our children, and I'd like to hear some more conversations related to our children in the 2024 and future conversations with this county. I don't know if you guys can really do a whole lot with the children, but it's nice to hear that you support activism related to our innocent and our most helpless of helpless. So we have our homeless veterans that I'm glad just a few short years ago we weren't even talking about. We didn't even want services for them. We didn't care about housing for them. And look at all the people that came up here, all these beautiful people that came up here and are, are sitting here advocating for the homeless vets, and God bless them for doing so. Let's do something for our children. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, ma'am.
For the record, Glenn Jablina, everything I put on the overhead, you have a copy of. This is a 50-page report back in March that tells you, you are aware of the problem. You should be aware of the problem. I either want to put clarity or closure to this item, because I'm getting tired of coming up here begging for money for our vets. I was here three years ago. We didn't have one thin dime for our veterans, for housing, for immediate housing. That's my concern. Tunnel to Towers is great, but you know, you guys came screaming and kicking on that one, so please don't take the credit for that. We need, we need to know what we're going to do today, because I have not seen those addressed. We talk about suicide. We talk about health. We talk about, put a roof over their head. Now, I wrote you, I will be at tomorrow's meeting, and I'll be here again and again and again. I can't understand for the life of me why are you putting things instead of actual housing for our homeless vets? I find it disturbing that this board has not provided one thin dime to house homeless vets. To date, and I just, I just got these facts yesterday, to date, we still have over 80 that we know of and a few hundred on the cusp that you are not covered. So let's talk about this. The, the funds that were diverted from Amanda Bell at 1.4 million that were the very last of the homeless veterans' funds were taken out of that, out of that silo and put in for office design. Don't kill the gadfly. I'm just the messenger, right? But you have an obligation and a duty and a commitment as an elected official to explain to the voters, the taxpayers, and more importantly, the homeless vets that are out there. You extinguished any hopes they had for temporary housing for the next two years by diverting that 1.4 million dollars that could have easily housed the vets that we know of, much less the couple of hundred that are on the bubble of being homeless. It's a serious problem. You haven't addressed it. You need to. So don't respond to me. Respond to the homeless vets that are going to be watching this. This is just a public service announcement, because you don't listen to me, you don't answer my emails. I've been marginalized up here time and time again, and that's okay. But you have an obligation to the homeless vets today who are homeless yesterday, who will be homeless tonight, why there is not any temporary funds for transitional housing. You could fix this in a heartbeat, and unfortunately, we're going to lose a few heartbeats if you don't get on the move on this. For the record, Glenn Jablina.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to come up for public comment?
I wanted to follow up on the presentation that was done.
Please state your name and.
I'm sorry, Carol Phelps-Mayaka. I wanted to follow up on the presentation that was done by the county on some of the improvements to the website. I noticed it, I read agendas and watch the county calendar, and this, we're making some progress. So sometimes you have to reward good behavior. It tends to sweeten the admonishments on bad behavior, but I do like what we're doing with our county website. As I said, the best way to honor our veterans is to practice what they fought for, and we'd like, again, to make another appeal to bring back public comment, Collins. We just had the board addressed about citizens advisory committees. We understand that that's under review. It's something that I reviewed myself many years ago, and I always wondered, why are those people not up here? When we've done this presentation for the Cracker Trail, but our Historic Preservation Board, our historic committees are, are not involved. We're talking about housing for vets. Where's our Neighborhood Services and our vets? We get rid of these committees before we realize that these are kind of like having a cabinet, and each one of you should be able to go to your citizens, and each of them has a passion. We have a wealth of retirees that want to tell us and educate us. We've talked about developing a Citizens Advisory Committee for people with disabilities. We've talked about the rural lands. Sounds like we need a little cabinet about our, our veteran services, and these are good things we could do. We've also talked about the Citizens Academy. We've, we'd like to bring back in those call and comments, and then we find that on our county Facebook page, we've been cut off of making comments on that. And I definitely can understand the problem. You know, people do get a little bit rough out there, but our problem is more of what you're putting on our, our Facebook page for the county. Shouldn't this be on that social media page, this meeting right here and right now, be on that? There was an excellent presentation on impact fees, but it tends to smell a little funny when we don't tell the whole story, and as Paul Harvey used to say, "The rest of the story." It was a wonderfully educational piece on impact fees, but we left out the rest of the story, and we have to be transparent, and we have to educate fully, not indoctrinate or propagandize. So we've done a good job, and I'd like to thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, looking forward, looking. Looking forward, looking out there, there seems to be no other further citizens comment on future denime, so I'll close public comment. And we're basically right on time for our time certain item, but I have Commissioner Van Austin Bridge on the board, and I have Commissioner Ballard on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to speak to Ms. Griffin's comments about, she had great comments about children, and just to address quickly what the board is doing for children of Manatee County. We're participating to the tune of millions of dollars in the relocation and the construction of a new police athletic league in partnership with the Sheriff's Department, the city of Bradenton, and some not-for-profits. We've also undertaken a homeless shelter for families with children called Under One Roof, should be located over near, and Commissioner Ballard's, is it Ballard's district?
It's actually in Ron's district.
Commissioner Ron's district, I apologize. Ballard is spearheading it, it's located in Ron's district. We've also put about $70 million, we're putting into our parks in this county, including a special needs playground, essentially the only one in the county park that we just broke ground on, it was the last week, I believe. So I appreciate you bringing attention to that, shedding light on it, and we are doing quite a bit for the children of Manatee County. There were additional comments made that this board doesn't do anything for homeless veterans. That is not true. The person who came up and made the statements knows it's not true. He continues to come up here and spread disinformation at meeting after meeting, regardless, apparently not concerned about his reputation. Fresh Start Manatee, something that this board is working on, a site for homeless people in Manatee County, there'll be a traditional, a transitional emergency housing location up in North County. Under One Roof will, of course, accept veterans and their families. The Salvation Army is able to expand, will be able to expand, once these places open and offer additional facilities and additional space at their facility. And of course, we partially fund the Salvation Army and Turning Points, both of which offer services to veterans in Manatee County. The, the truth is that this board has done more for the homeless in Manatee County than any previous board of county commissioners in the history of this county.
That's true.
And that's the fact. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
I don't think I have anything to add to that.
Commissioner Ballard?
Well, I was going to make some comments on, on all of the things that we're working on, but I think that Commissioner Van Austin Bridge stated it all very succinctly, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Seeing that, we'll end the public comment portion of the meeting, and we're going to go into our, we're right at the time for time certain item, at 10:30. Our time certain item is number 50, it's the execution of a county deed, donation agreement and use agreement with New College of Florida Board of Trustees for the property located at the Powell Crosley Estate. And I see Mr. Medder is up there to present for the county. And I see that we have President Corcoran of New College and, and also former Senate President Bill Galvano in here representing the foundation board, so.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Attorney, County Administrator. My name is Charles Medder. I'm the Property Acquisition Division Manager. I'll just talk a little bit about the transaction and how we got here. Back in October, October 10th, the board adopted a resolution to enter a donation agreement with New College and to convey the land, that's nine acres. And so today, the agenda item that's before you is essentially the second part of this transaction. You have execution of the donation agreement, execution of the use agreement, which is an exhibit to the donation agreement, as well as execution of the county deed, which will be held on escrow until closing. County will be the first party to execute all these agreements. And then my understanding, talking with Bill Galvano, is these will be executed by New College at an upcoming board meeting that they have. Thank you. On the 22nd of February. So once we have the fully executed agreements, then we'll work towards, they'll do some due diligence and then closing on this real estate transaction. The deed, specifically the deed of the nine acres it reserves on the easterly boundary, a 20-foot utility easement that coincides with the Forest Main 6A, 7A replacement project, as the county will have a Forest Main and a water line on the easterly boundary. So we'll retain an easement in the deed for that capital improvement project. And that's really what I have as far as the real estate transaction. If you want to have Elliott talk about the partnership, or?
What I'd do is bring Elliott up, just talk about the partnership with, with New College and the Crosley.
You bet. Good morning, Commissioners. For a guy that's been around the Crosley Estate since 1996, I think it's, it's, it's time to take it to a new level. I walked the property a couple of weeks ago with Representative Corcoran and Senator Galvano, and the most important thought was, let's get developing going around that beautiful estate without compromising the characteristics of that beautiful estate. And having spent a good hour and a half, two hours, we can definitely get there. If you want to redevelop the southwest district, you need seeds that drives new dollars to a corridor for it to be sustainable and redevelopable. This is one way of doing it. So I stand ready to answer any questions you might have, feel good about whatever decision you make, but if you move forward with this, this is, this is an opportunity to bring students, you know, from outside the county, and enhancing higher education in any community is a good thing. So I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions, Elliot? President Corcoran, would you like to say a few words before we?
Thank you. First, I just want to thank you guys very much. I've been here just under a year, and I will tell you, you guys have been just amazingly supportive. You've come to all our events, you participate in everything, and then this opportunity came about. And on behalf of our Board of Trustees, who've already voiced in, in unison, the support for this and the partnership, we're very, very excited. We're going through our master plan process right now, and that's added another whole wonderful curveball to our master plan process, and we hope to act on it very quickly as we go through the process. Right now, in the current drafts, we have new dormitories being built out there on the property, and some unsolicited architects have sent us such amazing renderings. So we're very excited about it. You guys have been a great partner, and just want to thank you all from the bottom of our heart on the, on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Galvano, oh, sorry.
I have a question for the, for the University President. So we do, we have embraced you, New College, with open arms. We, we love what's happening there. We're huge supporters. When the governor came to town, you know, it was part of my speech, right? So we love that you're coming to town, we love what you're doing there. When I spoke with Senator Galvano about this donation, my one caveat was that the Crosley ultimately would always remain in Manatee County's hands, and there would be no attempt for, by New College to annex the Crosley onto your campus. And I want, on the record, I want someone to assure me that that will continue to be the case.
Absolutely. We're at your, whatever we do over there, we've had a great meeting with Elliot. He took us through and talking about maybe some where you guys would allow us to maybe have some joint use if it, if there was a benefit.
We're great partners.
Yeah.
But as long as there's never an attempt to, to move on the ownership of the Crosley.
No. It would be something you guys would have to initiate, nothing we would ever do.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Ballard?
So just to, just to add to Commissioner Van Austin Bridge's comments, I, I agree, we're, we're just so excited about the, the changes that are happening and the revitalization that's happening at New College, excited to be a partner with you all, and excited for maybe some shared use of, of the property with, with the ownership always remaining with Manatee County. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. See anyone else on the board? Senator Galvano, you'd like to, any comment?
Real quick, I echo the appreciation, really appreciate everybody's hard work. And Charles, thank you so much for what you've done. I think we're in a very good spot legally with the documentation that's before you. It's also been reviewed by the council at the state university system, and so I encourage you to move forward.
Thank you, sir. All right. With that, do we need any public comment?
Yes.
Is there any public comment regarding?
Satcher.
Oh, Satcher, sorry.
Sorry.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate y'all being here today, and, you know, I think all of us are excited, or most of us are very excited about this opportunity. It's great to have preacher to, or one way of, I would say, a seed, you know, to be a part of a really incredible and important project for the next generation. These are college students, and we need places for them to go where they can learn about our great nation, the great things that we have done in the past and that we plan to do in the future. America is the greatest place on earth, and we need places that put that forward. And so I appreciate New College's work, the governor's work, and the president's work on doing that. And then, and I just wanted to appreciate what you just said, you know, as far as any type of, you know, that you wouldn't work on any annex or anything, anything would have to be county initiated in the future. And so I think that's a legitimate point that we just wanted to reiterate from here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Is there any public comment regarding this matter? If there is, please come forward. Not, I see no public comment, so we'll close public comment. There's been a motion by Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Satcher. If you please cast your votes now. And the motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Please, my, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a break. With that, what I'd like to do is take about a 10-minute break, give everybody a second to stand up and whatnot, so we'll go to recess for 10 minutes. Thank you very much. minutes. Thank you very much. on consent agenda items only. If anyone would like to have three minutes on consent agenda items only, well, seeing none, we'll close that. We'll close citizen's comment on consent agenda items. What I'd like to do, there's been no items asked to be pulled from the consent agenda. So what I'd like to do is ask for approval of the consent agenda. Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Okay, Commissioner Satcher motioned it. Commissioner Bearden seconded it. If you cast your votes now.
Mr. Chair, I have to call for public comment.
I'm sorry, can I call for public comment regarding item 46, adoption of resolution R 2436, infrastructure sales tax? Anybody want to talk about that? I know our CFO is, but seeing no public comment, could you please cast your votes now? The votes have been cast, and the motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. Coming up now is advertised public hearings, presentation scheduled. It's a public safety item. This is item number 47, adoption of ordinance 24-31, school zone speed cameras. And I believe Deputy DePaul is up.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Clegg. I have a presentation that I'd like to give. It's a very brief presentation. This is about automated enforcement in school zones, so those traffic cameras that would be placed in school zones throughout the county. First slide, yeah, if you don't mind. Thanks, Q. Okay. Perfect. So Manatee County in Florida have a speeding problem. This is no surprise. We've heard this from FDOT as well. In 2017, Sarasota, Manatee was ranked one of the 10 most dangerous metropolitan areas for pedestrians in the entire county. According to the Manatee County Sheriff's Office, Manatee County ranks in the top 25 counties in the state for traffic crashes resulting in serious and fatal injuries to pedestrians and bicyclists. Florida ranks as the second deadliest state for pedestrians. Next slide. So slowing down has been proven to save lives. Stopping distances obviously increase exponentially with momentum from faster speeds, and so I give a couple examples here. But the biggest thing is when you talk about pedestrians, if a person is hit by a car at 40 miles per hour, the fatality rate is over 40%. At 20 miles per hour, it's just 10%. And you can see at 58 miles per hour, the fatality rate is 90%. So we do have a serious concern, and the risk is real, specifically in school zones where children, there are heavier pedestrian traffic. Next slide. So Florida passed House Bill 657 to make our streets safer and protect our children. Speed cameras are only allowed to be used in school zones per House Bill 657. So this only addresses, sorry, to be clear, this only addresses the speed zones that are in school zones. Wide support is in opinion polls. There's strong bipartisan passage in the House and the Senate. We can only enforce during school hours, which is 30 minutes before school through 30 minutes after school. And the camera would only take photos of vehicles or issue violations to vehicles that are 11 miles per hour and above over the posted speed limit. This carries a lower fine amount than your regular red light cameras. If anyone remembers the red light cameras, it carried a fine of $158. This is only a fine of $100. And this fine revenue supports school safety and crosswalk guards. The statute's very specific on what these funds can be used for. They have to be used for public safety initiatives. This requires traffic studies and public hearings on the safety needs. Before we can install any cameras, an in-depth study has to be done, which we have conducted at the school zones within the county. And then we also have to have a public hearing, which is why this was advertised, the ordinance was advertised in advance for 10 days. Increased signage and warnings to drivers of the photo enforcement have to be posted. So before that, we can actually take the videos and the cameras, the camera footage, we have to post signage. And then there's a warning period, which includes a public notice period to inform the public. This warning period is 30 days. So once the camera is actually in effect, we have to issue warnings only for 30 days. Next slide. So in conclusion, this is a fair law that saves lives. It's violator-funded, and it curbs speeding via civil liability rather than criminal infraction, so it carries no points. Our community has a compelling safety need to improve pedestrian safety, and we can anticipate dramatically reducing speeding in the first year with these cameras. So the actions that are requested, this item specifically is the adoption of the ordinance 24-31 for school zone speed cameras. And then we have the approval of the interlocal agreement with the MSO, which was on the consent agenda that was already approved. And then two items from this one, we have the execution of the piggyback agreement for the speed detection camera system for school zones. So I'm here to take any questions about logistics or any of the language within the ordinance.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Ballard's on the board.
Yeah, I just have one quick question. On the second-to-last slide, the enforcement time, so it says enforced only during school hours, 30 minutes before school commences to 30 minutes after school ends. Is that literally the entire school day, or is it during pickup periods and drop-off periods?
That's a great question. So what the statute allows is from 30 minutes before school starts. So let's say if school starts at 8:00 a.m., it would start at 7:30. And then if school ends at 3:30, it would go until 4:00 p.m. all day. So during the, I say at the flashing beacon period, so that time that is the commuting time for drop-off and then pickup, during that time, it would enforce that speed zone, whatever that be on the flashing beacon. And then when the flashing beacon goes off, it would enforce the other posted speed. The reason behind the statute, I believe, is because there's still children that walk to lunch at some schools or get picked up early from school for a doctor's appointment or so on and so forth, and they want to protect the entire school zone during the school day. That does not mean that we have to enforce during those hours. That's what the statute allows. And so the vendor that's selected can do whatever we dictate is done, but the statute allows for that full school day. So it's roughly usually about seven hours.
Okay, so I just wanted to be clear that typically, you know, we think of that school zone enforcement as really being during those pickup and drop-off hours, but this does allow for those cameras to be on all day and enforcing during all school hours, regardless of whether it's pickup and drop-off. Okay, I just wanted to get some clarity on that. I don't necessarily have a super-strong opinion one way or the other, but I think the most important enforcement times are obviously during pickup and drop-off.
Thank you, Commissioner. I put myself on board. I think this is a great thing for Anchee County and for the schoolchildren that are out there and that are, you know, dealing with this every day. My question is, as much like with the red light cameras, when somebody would, they would consistently contest, they were turning on a red light or it was yellow or whatever, is the same system going to be in place with MSO when they review this, or is that an MSO question? I mean, there's not going to be much contesting that when you're flying through a school zone in the middle of the day that you're speeding, but we got to, I mean, you know, with the red light cameras, there was a lot of back-and-forth with citizens saying, no, I didn't do that. And they're like, yeah, you did, and that type of stuff, so.
That's another great question. The interlocal with the MSO is almost the exact same as with the red light cameras. So they have the same, they have the same responsibility when it comes to what footage that they, the vendor would review the violation and then send it to the deputy with MSO to review, and then say, yes, you can issue this violation, and then the vendor would send out the ticket. This, there is, it's a much easier review process. So in the past, you'd have to look at the signal phase, you'd have to look and make sure, you'd have to check the stop bar twice to make sure that the car didn't stop at the stop bar, that they actually went through. This is much simpler because the camera footage is located within the school zone. So really, the only check is, what time was it at? Was it, you know, was it during the flashing beacon time? What was the speed? Was it outside of that but in the school day? What was the speed? It's a very simple check. But the relationship with the ticket, with the tickets and how they're issued, and that that relationship with the vendor is the exact same.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Are there any other questions of Deputy DePaul? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
What I'd do is call for a public comment. Thank you, ma'am. You know the rules.
Angie Griffin, Manatee County activist, I'm going to tell you, I don't like this. I don't like this at all. I think the information we were just provided here is skewed because you're asking for red light cameras to be in pedestrian areas of children's schools, school zones, yet we co-mingled all adult pedestrian accidents with those children. When we're talking about spending money in Manatee County and taking taxpayer money and actually putting something in place that's going to cost taxpayers money in the future, such as these tickets and have this whole thing, which I personally fought to have those red light cameras removed from this community in its entirety, definitely are not pleased that we're even entertaining bringing some back even in school zones, because we just had a presentation here that didn't even identify one issue in a school zone. None. We have pedestrians, pedestrians are higher of, but every time I'm running down the road, especially on 14th Street, some of these people are adults. Actually, a lot of them are adults, making decisions to go out in front and try to run in front. So far, we have security people, what is it, crosswalk people at every school, every crosswalk. So we have them there. We're reducing the speed in those areas to 15 miles an hour. She says that if we have 20 miles an hour, people are, you know, their survival rate is at 10%, or not the survival rate, but their fatality rate is at 10%. So we're doing everything necessary. And if we're going to be asking for specific traffic cameras in specific areas, I want all the information related to those specific areas, not a collective problem. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Cruz, are you on the board?
I am.
Oh, sorry. Is anybody else for public comment? Sorry, I didn't see anybody coming forward, so. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, I figured I'd answer since I'm the one who made the motion to remove the red light cameras last time. I believe this to be entirely different. That's why I support this. The red light cameras were subjective, whether or not you came to a complete turn or not. They were only in like 10 intersections that were picked based upon the highest revenue-generating intersections, not the ones with the most traffic accidents and fatalities. It was a poorly planned money grab. That's why this board got rid of them a couple of years ago. Every member of this board who was sitting at the time voted to get rid of them. This is different. One, speed's not subjective. You can calculate that pretty accurately. Second, this is for kids in school zones. There's a reason why we have enhanced ticket prices for speeding through school zones as it is, because it's more dangerous. We're protecting our kids. Kids that, you're talking about adults and pedestrians walking? We're talking about eight-year-old kids walking from their subdivision to their school that don't always understand the concept of looking both ways. So I treat this entirely differently. This is not going to be done based upon where the highest revenue is. It's going to be based upon where the biggest protection is, the biggest risk is, the most kids walking to school is. Just don't speed through school zones. Again, that's not subjective. You're either speeding or you're not. It's not a matter of whether or not you came to a complete stop before you made a right-hand turn.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Van Ostenbridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I probably should just take myself off the board. Commissioner Cruz pretty much said everything I wanted to say. The only thing I would add, I know you, I like you, but you did come up here earlier in the meeting, and you said, what are you guys doing to protect children? You need to do more to protect children. And we come back after the break, and we have an ordinance to protect children, and you say, I don't like that. Do away with that. I knew when I ran for office, I wouldn't be able to please everyone. And I guess that rings true. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. All right, we've had public comment. We've had the Commissioner comment, and there's been a motion made by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge and seconded by myself. If you cast your votes at this time. Thank you, and the item carries seven to zero. What I'd like to do now is move to item 49, since these both, 47 and 49 are basically the same. And what I'd like to do is, who's coming forward on, on 49, execution of piggyback agreement, number 24 TA 005197JE? Have you got any more stuff for that?
No, sorry, guys.
And for speed detection camera systems for school zones.
Pause me, I'm not talking.
Oh, you're not? Okay, sorry. I paused you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney. Again, I'm here to answer any questions regarding the proposed piggyback agreement for the speed detection camera system for school zones. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Commissioner Cruz?
Why? Why are we piggybacking instead of doing an actual bid process like everything else?
So the first item is, it is authorized by our ordinance to enter into piggyback agreements so long as the contract was the result of a competitive solicitation by a public agency, which in this case, it was the city of Alpharetta, Georgia. It went through an RFP process, selected Redspeed Georgia LLC. The second is also efficiency and time. If we went through a solicitation process, you're looking at six, approximately six to eight months, whereas with a piggyback agreement, we can immediately implement these services and get the project going as quickly as possible.
I know ordinance allows for piggybacking. It doesn't mean we have to piggyback. Most things we don't. I mean, in theory, that means we're allowed to piggyback for all of it, and why do we even have a procurement process? No offense. I mean, you're very good at your job. You find us the best opportunities, and more importantly, you find the taxpayers of Manatee County the best opportunities that minimize our costs. And in some cases like this, like the methane collection, it increases our revenue stream. You do a good job at it. We trust you. This seems like there's no reason to piggyback this at all. I mean, we're not even piggybacking off of like Sarasota or Pasco or somebody of similar size, similar location. We're piggybacking off an entire other state. And when I asked about this and said why, I was told, oh, it's not just Alpharetta. City of Miami, or maybe it's Miami-Dade County, whomever it is, also is using this same company. They piggybacked off Alpharetta, Georgia. So you can't even use, you can't even use that as a justification, like, hey, here's another group in the state of Florida under same laws that did it. This makes no sense. There, it's, the reasons that our ordinance allows for piggyback, in my mind, and you can correct me where I'm wrong, I know this, that's subjective, is because we have a time situation, like there's a breach someplace, and we have to jump on something we can't pay. There's not. I understand someone could say, you know, every day we wait is a risk for a kid. But let's remember your six to nine months. This went into law last July. Why wasn't this on the July 2nd agenda to come back immediately upon return from recess if there was that much of a time sensitivity? We sat around for seven and a half months waiting for this to come up. We could have done the entire bid process during that window of time. So nobody deemed it that time sensitive then. Or you piggyback because there's no other options, and you know it's, you know who's going to win, so why bother going through the effort if there's only one bidder? That's not the case here. There's lots of companies that do this. Where the third thing is, somebody just wants to give somebody a contract. And I don't agree with piggybacking this. This is tax dollars. We have people here talking about how much this is going to cost everyone. I'd like to see the options, you know, when you, when you open it up for more bids, maybe someone comes in offering to spend more money putting the infrastructure in, maybe someone offers us a higher cut of the revenue split on the back end. If it's, if it's red speed, it's red speed. Great, I don't care who wins it. I just want to know that we've put it up for the real bid. You're piggybacking not only off of another state, but it's from five years ago. It's from 2019, pre-COVID. The world has changed in terms of bids and competitors and so forth. How do we even know this is a real bid? How do we even know this is a competitive bid relative to what the rest of the market would offer?
I wanted to offer a couple things. I think I showed this in your briefing as well, but just for, I think, the public's also clarification. So this is a $0 contract. So all of the revenue, so the vendor puts all of the capital upfront to install the cameras, and then they get a percentage of the revenue that's collected from the tickets, which is 30%, something small. So the performance metrics, the statute is so specific on the amount of money that we can collect, how much money goes to each different entity, that really the performance standards to evaluate different vendors. performance standards to evaluate different vendors, it would maybe be a percentage or two or less that you would gain on the revenue backend. But this is a $0 contract. So any vendor also has a vested interest to say, we're going to put the best cameras out there because they, they, they would want to obviously collect the most tickets. So that's the one piece that I think here, when we looked at the timeline for what it would take, and obviously I defer to Jake's expertise as the procurement official, but for, for me, when it looks at the time that it would take me and staff to assess different vendors, you're talking about six months and hours and hours. I participated in the solid waste, RFP and the, and the biogas with, with Evan. It's a lot of staff time that goes into those for potentially, you know, nine months and then we ended the same result. So that's where we looked at the piggybacking as the option with Jake's, you know, obviously Jake's approval on that.
Understood, but Manatee County isn't unique. Almost everything we do has been done someplace else. Again, I'll ask, why do we have a procurement department? Why, if it's that much hours and that much time spent, why aren't we just piggybacking everything we do? There's a reason for it. You said, oh, it's just a percent or two, at zero cost upfront, so it's just the, the revenue split, a percent or two. Miami's contract anticipated $144 million worth of revenue. A percent or two is pretty meaningful for that. I'd rather have the percent or two. Again, it's not my money, it's taxpayer money. A percent or two may not be a whole lot to us who's just throwing money around, but it's, it's real money. That, that could be done with stuff. And I understand that the time it takes to procure things, I understand that, that the way government works is a little onerous at times, but that's, that's what we're dealing with here. And again, I don't see a reason to piggyback anything. If we can get a percent or two, I'll tell you, it may even be Redspeed who comes in and says, I'll give you a percent or two more than I gave Alfreda, Georgia, because I want to make sure I win this bid. It's still money. And I guarantee you, over the long haul of this entire contract, it's going to be positive money and accretive to the taxpayers of Manatee County to take that six months now, when we're probably signing a five or 10 or whatever year contract on the backend that we're going to be, we're going to be stuck with.
Wait. Courtney, any response?
I'm not aware of us piggybacking everything like was just stated. I think in this particular case, the whys are, I mean, obviously we have a high level of trust with Jake, so he's done his due diligence. And in this particular case, it's a zero cost and it's a profit share, so it makes sense. The other thing is, we do want these things in place because I know in my district, the parents are really concerned about this. We want it before school starts. So if we're here to serve constituents as well, especially on a zero cost, we, we need to be in that timeframe if we can possibly help it. So I mean, to me, those are some pretty significant whys. We're pleasing the constituents, safety for the kids, it's kind of, we can do it now before school start instead of after school start. It's zero cost, it's a profit share. I just don't think we need red tape in this particular case. And like Commissioner Cruz said, we have a high trust in our staff, so why would I question this decision? So I would vote to approve. That's my take.
Commissioner Satcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In 2021, when I was just beginning my term, one of the things that, you know, I had a constituent write me and say, you know, there's kids, ninth grade through 12th grade kids that are walking to school along the side of Erie Road on the way to Parish Community High School. And there's no sidewalk and the grass is three feet high. And so they're walking in the road and, and the county made it a priority and built a sidewalk in record time because, you know, we said, let's get this done. And they did and it, and it helps to keep those young people, those kids safe. And, and I just walked my nine-year-old to school within the last two weeks. I walked her and there's the sheriff and there's the two crossing guards, plenty of flashing lights. And as the person came to go to the crosswalk, I'm holding her hand and I was like, is this dude going to stop or not? You know, and I mean, and I'm pretty convinced the only reason is because I would have messed up his car pretty bad, you know? Because he was, he was not thinking about anyone else. And, and I think that that's rare, you know, in Manatee County. It's a friendly place to live, but we shouldn't, you know, we also need to take precautions that we can. I think this is definitely a reasonable precaution and I'm all for doing it as efficiently as possible. That's why we push for the sidewalk right away. There's so many things we've done that we've tried to get done quickly. I, I know I ran and, and some of the others ran saying that we wanted to be as efficient as we could with government and to run government like a business whenever we could. And this is an opportunity to do that. Let's take advantage of it and get these things up and keep our kids safe on their way to school. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Pull yourself down. Okay. All right, you're good. All right. Thank you, Jake. What I'd like to do is open this up to public comment. And you have, state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Andrew Griffin, Manatee County activist. I know I'm on the wrong side of this argument here for this board. Okay, I get it. I get it. But here's my issue. If they can tell me exactly how many children were killed in, in these pedestrian walkways in 2023 or 2022 or 2020, I would be on board with supporting it, but I'm all about numbers and factual information and so far-
What is the threshold? How many do you want to have died?
Huh? I don't want any, I don't want any of them, but the point-
What's the number?
I get it, but the, what the point is, is if we're going to be putting this in there, we want to make sure that it is actually effective. We've got lights, I mean, you're talking about lights and this and that, and it's still not stopping people. What do you think makes, is going to make a camera stop people? If, if all these lights, security people, crossing guards, you know, sheriff's departments, if those aren't stopping the people, what do you think's got, that camera's got to do? I'm just asking for a few friends. That's all I'm saying. We want to make sure that kids are safe, of course, touche, right? I'm up here with my shirt, mommy, why wasn't I good enough? I get it. But that my stuff is not about, it's about the children being safe, but it's also about the taxpayers here in this county not being bamboozled yet again from more traffic cameras. I just want to make sure that we have the numbers to make a decision. If we have a huge problem in these crossing guard, absolutely, I'm 100% in supportive and I would support it. But nobody has determined that there is a huge problem in these areas yet to justify all this, even at zero cost to the county. Because we know zero cost to the county is still cost to the residents of this county by means of those tickets, right? And those are the people that I'm also helping protect as an activist here in this county. So God bless.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Please state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
John Ryan. I live in Bivard County. I represent a company called Genoptik Smart Mobility. And as the commissioner had pointed out, there's many companies that provide this solution for photo enforcement. I want to first applaud the commission on moving forward with this initiative for schools on speed enforcement. It protects our most precious group of citizens and that's our children and the crossing guards that help get them to school. Having been a 26-year law enforcement police executive, as well as 14 years in this industry, I've seen too many tragedies from speeding and involving children as well. Again, we're in favor of the ordinance for the schools on speed, but we must speak against this piggybacking. As you pointed out, Commissioner, this is a five-year-old procurement. I, I agree that they can do it by their procurement policy and code that the county allows piggybacking, but it's a five-year-old contract. It's a contract for someplace that had six school zones where you're going to be much larger than that. It's not even comparable in that size and scale and scope. And it has to be a contract that is assignable. I think that's one piece that's missing here, just because you allow for piggybacking. The original agency, government entity, has to allow that to be assignable. I've seen nothing. You've had very, a lot of transparency in your documents online here for this meeting. You have 170 pages, including the RFP that Alfreda, Georgia put out, including the response that Redspeed put forward for that and including the contract that they put together. Nowhere in there does it say that it's assignable for another entity to use. In fact, section six on that contract has an assignability paragraph and it says in the first sentence, this is not assignable unless we agree separately to do it. And I've seen nothing in Miami Dade, when, when Redspeed went there with this and here, any other document that says that Alfreda and Redspeed together have said this is an assignable contract. It's being put forth that way, but it's not truthful. There's many other companies. Genoptik is right here in Florida, we're based out of Jupiter, Florida, 200 employees there. We do the same photo enforcement intent solution. It's very competitive, so there's about seven or eight other companies that do the same. Please, put it out for, for an RFP, an RFQ. I haven't heard anything about going out and getting three quotes to make sure that this is the best deal you're going to get. So you should go out to competitive bid, make it fair to everybody. Your own policies and procedures for standards and your standards amount for procurement says in the first section, you should be open and fair and impartial and so that it's not arbitrarily and capriciously excluding any other qualified bidders. So go out there and make, you make your point, you know, you say it in one document, but go out and do it and go out and see who's there and you might get the best, a better deal. The other thing I'm noticing is, it's supposed to be, you're piggybacking so that you don't have to do any work and do any other, any changes. You're accepting the terms and conditions of pricing that they had in Alfreda and that you're going to go here. I just heard again that they're offering lower pricing than what Alfreda is.
Thank you, sir.
They're going a little further beyond what they can do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir. You know the, know the rules.
Keith Green, Manatee County resident. As a person who was once actually a former employee with the school district of Manatee, I was once a bus attendant myself at one point, I can't tell you how much this would be very helpful to not only just those bus attendants that are also trying to help usher kids across the streets, because in my personal experience, I've nearly had to dodge a few cars, like I was on, like I was basically in the matrix in so many ways. So I, I feel that this is very helpful. And not only that, you know, I would thank you. My former coworkers would thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. All right, we have Commissioner Ballard is back on the board.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment in response to Ms. Griffin's ask for statistics. I couldn't find Florida-specific information, but I, I did find that on average, 25,000 children a year are, are injured in, in school zones and 100 children are killed. And that's, that's nationwide statistics, not Florida-specific.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Manosonbridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just say thank you to Jake and the county administrator. We, we tasked you with running this place like a business and here we have an example of something that would take months and scores of, if not hundreds of hours of staff time for little to no difference in the end. This is an example of how we want to run the county as much like a business as we possibly can. Jake, you could run everything through the entire process to justify your existence and the importance of your department, but when you see an opportunity to expedite things, you did. And I mean, Commissioner Cruz is kind of right. We should piggyback where we can. I think where, you know, where it's smart to do so, I think we should. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. See those other, any other public comment? Commissioners have given comment? There's been a motion to approve?
Still on the board.
Oh, you are? Sorry. I didn't see you come back on.
It's okay. It's okay. No, I, I, look, I, I understand running things like a business, but business looks for the bottom line. At the end of the day, again, this isn't a small contract. We're not buying staples. We're buying a long-term contract that potentially has nine figures worth of revenue associated with it. A percentage or two is meaningful. If a business just took the easy way out all the time, that business would be out of business very quickly. Speed isn't always the best way of doing things. And again, this isn't a small thing. This isn't a time-sensitive thing. This is somebody coming in with an idea to piggyback off. I don't know who it is. I mean, I guess, I guess we never implemented the lobbyist registration in Manatee County that we previously spoke about because somehow this company got into Miami and is getting into here and they're all getting no bid contracts off of outdated, to, to the point over here, outdated piggyback, which again, my understanding of piggybacking was they were supposed to be comparable in the first place. You know, a, a tiny little town in a whole nother state is not comparable. That's not piggybacking. That's just you pick a winner and we're going with it and the contract's not even the same. So I don't even know how this falls under definition of piggybacking. This is just, the Manatee County's elected to pick somebody that we're going to go with and we're not going to bid it out to anybody. So I, I disagree with this process. Again, if it's Redspeed, it's Redspeed. If it's somebody else, it's somebody else. But we have procurement. We don't seem to be using them. They picked who the number one choice was on a different contract previously and we yelled at them about that. They picked who our waste hauler contract should be. We yelled at them about that. It seems like we're not using procurement the way it should. And making a claim that this is how business runs shows you've never run a business.
Thank you, sir. With that, we have, nobody else on the board. And so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Satcher, seconded by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, if you would cast your votes now. And the motion carries six, one with Commissioner Cruz voting no. All right. Thank you very much. On to the next item, which is item 48, Comedian Veteran Services, appointment of one member to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and Adoption of Resolution R 24-037, appointing one member to seat eight. I do have a question regarding this. The applicants that filed, one of them is a sitting planning commissioner, I think he's vice chair. Isn't that seat normally appointed by, is it, is it under a liaison? When I was on the county, when I was on the planning commission, I was appointed as the liaison between the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission.
I, I can answer it because I'm on that board.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's how we've done it. We voted on Bill Connerly previously to take the seat. It's been a seat very hard to fill. It was actually vacant for about two years before Bill Connerly agreed to come on. Now he's off Planning Commission, which caused it to be vacant. Because technically by Florida statute, it clearly states that it's from somebody from the Planning Commission, which constitutes the members of the Manatee County Planning Commission only, so it's very hard. The universe is small. I know one of the applicants here is from a different Planning Commission that's from municipality that also has a vacant seat looking for somebody from their Planning Commission. But we've always voted for it. We've never had it appointed. We voted for Bill Connerly.
Okay. Yeah, that was, yeah, I was just bringing up because when I was there, I, I don't know if Bill was there or not, but I was going to those meetings and Bill was, as the chair, was not going to those meetings. So I was going on behalf of the, I guess, his behalf. So that's the reason I asked a question for, with regards to both applicants. All right. What I do is open up the nominations for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Open nominations.
Where's the matrix?
Where's the matrix?
Yeah, the matrix is in there.
I know my Keith Green.
Do I have a second?
I'll move to closed nominations.
County attorney?
I'm sorry?
Commissioner Cruz, because it's, Commissioner Cruz is quoting a statute that states that we have to appoint someone from our Planning Commission.
Not from the city.
Not from the city? Is that?
So I'm going to need...
I'm not sure of the statute, so I mean...
There's a lot of different seats on this commission. I went back and looked at the statute during the briefing. Any statute verify which seat was...
It is for Seat 8. It's a member who actively serves on a local planning commission, and I did reach out to the state, and they did say it would be better to have somebody from the municipality that's on the Planning Commission. However, it is not a rule. It could be either the city or the county. There's no definitive rule on that.
So, sir, I have a motion on the floor to close nominations.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You need a second to close nominations.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Bearden, seconds. The motion, closed nomination carried 7-0, and...
We need to call for public comment.
Yes, sir. And now I'd like to ask, call for public comment. If there's anyone like to speak regarding this matter, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close public comment, and we need, Commissioner Satcher made the motion for Keith Green, Bearden seconded. And now I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor of appointing Keith Green to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
And I say aye, and there you go, sir. Thank you very much. You've been appointed.
Thank you.
No pay. Lot of time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. And I got one more thing, the adoption. Adoption of Resolution R24-037. You like to comment on that?
Oh, yes. Adoption of Resolution R24-037, appointing one member, Keith Green, to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee.
Okay. Is there any public comment regarding the resolution? See none? All right. All those in favor of adopting the Resolution R24-037? Motion's been made, it's been seconded by, made by Kevin Van Austin-Bridge, seconded by Commissioner Satcher. Please cast your votes now. And the motion carries 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We've gone along. We have one commissioner agenda item, and that's by Commissioner Satcher, so discussion on the handy bus. It's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just simply am hoping for some support from the board to just direct staff to take a look at our handy bus operations. Right now, if you need, like if you're, you know, transportation disadvantaged, you have to have so much lead time on calling for one of these, that it's pretty tough. And so in our society today, where we can all pick up our phone and do something immediately, they need, you know, I don't know the exact lead time, but it gets pretty extensive. And then as far as where they can go, as you get towards Lakewood Ranch and towards Parish, I don't think that this government wants to undertake, you know, extensive bus lines to every single, you know, location or large business. But I do think we should look into having it more available and easier to more locations for the handy bus or for transportation for those that need the help. So I'm hoping for some support on that, and I'm definitely welcome if we want to look into making it an Uber-type of deal. I've heard they do that in Sarasota. So that's what I'm hoping to get from today.
Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge?
Thank you, sir. And I understand where Commissioner Satcher's coming from. He has underserved communities in his district that may not register in everyone's head right off the bat when you think of underserved communities, places like Duette and Maiaaca. And are we providing service out there? And what would the cost be to the county to provide a bus running all the way out there? So we've discussed in the past, looking at opportunities for rideshare programs as part of our transit, and sort of pairing those together, or potentially just utilizing smaller vehicles, minivans, which, of course, can accommodate wheelchairs, and utilizing those vehicles, which would not, were easier to get in and out, and cheaper to operate, not requiring a CDL driver. So I don't know if he's looking for some kind of direction, but I would think directing the administrator and staff to come back to us in 90, 120 days, whatever, with some sort of a potential plan for how we could incorporate rideshare and/or smaller personal vehicles into the fleet.
Yeah, I would add to that, to me, when, you know, when it comes to making appointments, I would like for someone, if they call us before noon on a Monday, for them to be able to get a morning pickup on a Tuesday. And I don't believe that that's currently always the case. So, well, yeah, and I'm not saying for sure that we would do that. I want them to look at it during this study. And so I'd add that to the motion and make that my motion. I'm fine with what Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge said. I imagine I'm going to have to rephrase it.
Do we need a motion, or do we need just direct staff?
What do you have?
I mean, I'm, there was, do we need just direct staff? Or you actually want a motion?
How about a motion that directs staff to bring back potential rideshare and/or changes to, rideshare opportunities, or changes to the makeup of our fleet to include personal vehicles in an effort to reduce wait times for constituents?
For the handy bus.
For the handy bus program.
So moved.
Second.
Or second, whichever you are doing.
We have, I'm not going to repeat that motion, but we have a first, we have a first and a second on the motion regarding the handy bus. Is there any public comment regarding the handy bus before we vote?
Yes. So Andrew Griffin, Manatee County, I won't take too much of your time, but yes, I do agree something like this needs to happen, and maybe a combination of, like, rideshare to maybe a hub, like just getting a little hub where another bus can come pick them up, or something like that. I'm not sure, depending on how, I, how, I don't know how active the handy bus is, but if it's really active, that whole 24-hour turnaround for a drive might get a little bit too much for staff, so you might want to evaluate that information as well. But I think it's a great program, and there's a lot of elderly still out in Maiaaca, there's a lot of elderly out in Duette, there's a lot of people that are just underserved around here. Many of you know my roots are Maiaaca City, so I can understand, and definitely trying to get services out there, I'm sure they'll be welcome to that. But I believe there's been some sort of form of that for some time, because I remember my grandfather, years ago, I don't know what program it was, but this was when I, this is 30 years ago, don't tell anybody my age, but I think there was some type of program there at that time. It was very beneficial and very helpful, so I'd like to see something like that.
Thank you for your comments. All right, we had a motion, we had a motion on the floor, and it was seconded, so...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Come in, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we have transit leadership in the room. We have Kevin and Ben in the room, but I also like Chad, an opportunity to explain some of the, what we're doing with transit with regards to making a better use, especially with veterans. Go ahead.
The time, Chad Butso, Public Works, much of what was requested is something that I feel we're well-positioned to be able to provide. Even just this afternoon, we're doing our kickoff meeting recently, you approved a contract for us to consult with the Center for Urban Transportation Research, CUDER, next door, to discuss the on-demand investigation of providing enhanced service for our veterans. Along with that, we had intentions of expanding a separate, parallel scope with them to begin to look at an on-demand service for, like, those nearing transit service areas, i.e., just the typical ones that you look at are more like the Parish or Lakewood Ranch area, where fixed route service doesn't look into there. So this is just an additional way to discuss how we may use those services as well. Within this report and getting the additional information, we can remind that we run the two services within the handy bus together, an ADA service and a transportation disadvantage. An ADA service is an extension of your fixed route, so those folks that qualify for those types of trips can get same-day service. But the transportation disadvantage is something that's planned on being a 48-hour reservation and has been for some time, and we understand that that's being looked at to enhance. But that's supplemental, whether it be with our own vehicles or a private service that can deal with more efficiently the non-wheelchair trips. That is absolutely something that even that veteran service was trying to provide a more timely and a more convenient service to the community. So not thinking on air, we're in the mid-February, I think we're coming in to write on those discussions in 90 days or 60 days, heading into some budget discussion. So I think these reports will time in very well to give you more information.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, county administrator? You're good? Okay. We had a motion by Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge, a second by Commissioner Satcher, to direct staff. Oh, I thought you, okay, flip-flop it. Motion by Satcher, seconded by Van Austin-Bridge, on the motion to direct staff to look at other alternatives for the handy bus rideshare and things like that. So being that it's not up on the board, I'll just call for a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? An opposed, the motion carries. Staff, you got your, you got your motion. So, all right, with that, county attorney, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Other than that, you're, we call a small-digit midget in the Marine Corps, you're getting close to your time.
Your comment, not mine, sir.
County administrator, you have any comments?
A news flash coming out next Tuesday. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any additional commissioner comments?
I did more of a question. This is for Commissioner Satcher. I know you deferred Safe Haven, so if you want to wait, but I was excited to see it back on there. We, I had it on the agenda last August, and I know we kind of deferred it to have the county attorney look at a few things, we looked at it, so I was happy to see it come back on. So I was curious if you, at least wanted to give us an idea of where that topic was going, so we can prepare for it, because I'd love to support whatever it is you're trying to do with these.
Yeah, great job bringing it up in a meeting. I had actually, when you, I had talked to some of the fire and then the legal way back when I first was in the seat, and then thought that there were problems that made it where we couldn't go forward with it, and then it's gotten brought up again since then. Basically, I've lined up some of the documents and support that I want, and from the organization, they come, will come and speak. There's a chance that we could have someone from the organization that does the Safe Haven baby boxes to come speak. But that wasn't all put together for this meeting, so I'm deferring it to just the next meeting to see what all we can come with. Right now, the plan is to make these locations available at our EMS stations, since we have authority over those.